We call the order to dismiss special meeting of the Council at 4:30 PM. Counselors?
No, sir.
On three, discussion on proposed changes to the employee handbook. Mr. Handbook?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Got two items on the agenda that I did one PowerPoint just to kind of go through. They are somewhat related, the employee handbook and then the travel policy. And so you have the draft documents in the packet and I did a little PowerPoint just to kind of highlight the changes and the proposed wordings. And then we can look specifically at the documents if that's necessary or answer any questions that way. So we'll just kind of run through. The purpose obviously was for tonight was to provide an overview of those proposed revisions and what we're requesting is an updated standalone travel policy so that as we make updates to the travel policy, it doesn't require amending the full employee handbook. It's a separate standalone policy that we can manage a little bit more efficiently and to modernize the documents, clarify the policies and the language therein, align them with state law where necessary, with best practices that have been identified, and in some cases just align them with what we're, how we're currently conducting operations. And we want obviously to support a fair and consistent administration of the policies and requesting that if you do so choose to adopt them, we make them effective January So we kind of broke down the proposed changes within the employee handbook to three different tiers or three different levels, if you will, of changes. Tier one are really just housekeeping updates, structural grammatical kind of things. Tier two are policy clarifications or compliance updates. And then tier three, there are a couple that are a little bit more substantive. There are actual operational adjustments that we'll go through one by one and make sure that we're all in agreement with the way those are written. Most of them are just refining our existing policy rather than creating new rules or new ways of doing things. The travel policy isn't really much of a change from the way we are currently doing business, but it's just being pulled out of the handbook. And there are a couple slight adjustments to the way we've been currently operating that we'll talk through when we get to that portion of the PowerPoint. And so as we go through the structural or housekeeping updates, you'll see that what was a welcome and a background section, we just organized into one consolidated welcome section, welcoming the new employees to the organization, removing the organizational chart from the employee handbook simply because we maintain that separately as a part of our annual budget adoption. And if we do make changes, we don't want to have to go back and amend the employee handbook. So we just, we're going to just manage that or the proposal is to manage that during our annual budget process and it will always be included as a part of the annual budget adoption. We did a very, again, minor grammatical change. We renamed automotive services to fleet services to align with the way we've set up our maintenance services division, just industry standard technology. We've removed at the end of the document, the outdated employee assistance program or EAP form that was an appendix in the back. We no longer use Deer Oaks and so we removed that out. We have a separate EAP provider through our insurance now. We also updated the employee acknowledgement form and put it in there as an appendix so that we know what that prescribed form looks like and we will make sure that we acquire those from all employees when they get their employee handbook. And then again, just some formatting and readability improvements that you can identify with the red line document that was in the packet tonight. Going to more of policy clarifications or compliance updates, the, one of the discussions that occurred with our strategic plan was to remove the word, the year 2027 from the vision statement just to make it evergreen and to not tie it to a 2027 timeframe, just to say, you know, Navasota, what America wants to be rather than just 2027. We want to be that without a year associated with it. We've updated our job application process, allowed to allow electronic signatures in the online system whereas the wording was kind of prescriptive to a wet signature, a hard signature. And then we changed a little bit in the orientation section. We've clarified that the handbook in most cases is distributed electronically, but employees can have a hard copy if they choose. And all employees sign the acknowledgement form saying that they do have access to the employee handbook. Continuing on, we've updated the nepotism chart within the document. That was something that the legal counsel kind of brought to our attention, that it wasn't really in compliance with the latest Attorney General's rulings. And so the new chart in there is, has been verified to be compliant with the government code. We've clarified also in there that performance evaluations will occur on the employees' anniversary date rather than all employees getting done on the same day of the year, which is pretty much an administrative nightmare to try to have all managers evaluating every single employee in the organization all on the same day. You know, if we spread those out, align them with their anniversary dates, number one, it's not quite an administrative burden at one time on the managers, but also it allows us to align as we do consider later this fiscal year adopting the defined step pay plan that we've talked about that will come after we do the employee, I'm sorry, the compensation analysis. That gives us an opportunity when they get their annual performance evaluation, that would be the opportunity to move them to the next step in the pay plan as well. So we're just getting that set up and prepared. And then with retirement, the retirement section, we did update to the 6% TMRS contribution that you all approved in the budget and also at the last council meeting approved by ordinance, those changes with TMRS. We also modernized some of the terminology and references in that section and clarified that city vehicles are designated as smoke and tobacco free just like city, other, city buildings.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
I don't know how many folks in the, use chewing tobacco or something like that, but this means that they would not be able to use it in a city vehicle?
That is correct.
Is that setting some folks up for?
That's how it's been in every city I've been employed and I would prefer to keep it that way.
So what do you, so if somebody violates that, then you take?
Disciplinary action.
Okay. I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
You can move on then.
Yes, sir.
Just asking.
So as we get into more substantial or operational type changes, we're going to go a little bit slower on these because these are, again, I want to make sure that we talk through them. The leave definitions and the approval processes are really, the clarification really isn't much, but vacation, for vacation leave, rather than it accruing all at one time per month, we've, the proposal is to set that up for a biweekly accrual, which is much more standard. Most employers, it happens with their biweekly pay periods. It does propose a slightly enhanced accrual rates. We did not have a, an increased accrual rate for employees, non-firefighting employees from the 15, I'm sorry, the 10 to 20-year range. It adds, it just adds another step in there. The chart, I'd have to pull up the chart to get to the specifics. It is in the document, but it's, there was a slightly enhanced accrual rate there, but separate, keeping the separate accrual schedule for 24-hour shift firefighters like you, like we've had in the past, we did not change that. We did also currently in the document have the maximum vacation accrual equal to one year of accrual. And we're still kind of going through best practices, what that looks like for how much an employee should be allowed to go. We want, we want to encourage the employees to use their vacation and take it. And we also at the same time want to limit the city's liability exposure so that we don't have employees banking a whole lot of vacation hours and then that becomes payable at separation and we end up in a budget crunch or crisis because, you know, several people have built up very high balances.
Six months.
Yeah, so, but at the same time, the discussion that we've been having in the, in the leadership team is maybe we limit the exposure like it is now to one year of accrual, but we allow the employees perhaps to build up more than that so that if they wanted to build it up almost like a catastrophic leave bank of their own, that they're in control of and that they can make sure that if later in their career they have a catastrophic illness or a family member needs some attention, they would have some extra leave that they could lean on. And so I think that we may be coming back pretty quickly with, with an adjustment to, to try to make sure that we, we give as much flexibility as we can to the employees without creating an undue liability for the, for the city. And so I think that probably would. And then what that, the way that is structured is when you do get to whatever that maximum accrual is, then the, the leave just simply stops accruing or pauses accruing until some is used and then it picks right back up. So each two-week pay period is a new opportunity to accrue leave. And if they're at the maximum for that two-week period, it just does not accrue and if they're below the maximum, then it does accrue. So it's, it's pretty straightforward from there. We just are still having an internal discussion on kind of that balance of limiting the city's exposure but also giving flexibility to the employees. We did also a much more standardized approach and really the way we've been conducting business is part-time employees do not receive holiday or vacation leave. That's very standard and most employers do not extend those benefits. We had some ambiguous wording in our current handbook that said a part-time employee that works 20 hours a week is eligible for paid holiday leave and vacation leave, but it didn't say is that they work 20 hours one week and that gets it for them forever? Or is there some milestone of how many weeks? Is it across a whole year if they average 20 hours? And so really we just felt like a more appropriate way. The directors all confirmed that we've not had any part-time employees receiving those benefits. So it's not like we're taking something away that people have grown to expect. We just wanted to make it clear and it does seem to be much more standard for most employers to not extend those benefits to part-time employees. It's oftentimes part of the justification for making a position part-time is so you don't have the benefits costs associated with that position. And so we're just trying to standardize that on, on what is generally offered. They do, they are eligible in certain circumstances. The handbook was a little bit more clear on the prorated sick leave that they could earn. Again, I don't know that that's really the standard, but we just didn't, this wasn't intended to be a full-scale, front-to-back change of all of the employee handbook. We just had a few things we wanted to get in place for the upcoming year. And then the directors and I have already discussed about, you know, even taking a little bit deeper dive into the handbook next year and coming back to you all with some, some other thoughts after a more thorough review. But this does, you know, like I said, the, removing part-time holiday and vacation is more typical of municipal practices and it simplifies our payroll and benefits administration. We, we did add Juneteenth into the handbook. You all had adopted Juneteenth as a city holiday, but it had not been incorporated officially into the handbook, so we did add that in. And then also we did some clarification wording in there about when holidays are observed. So for most employees that are, that, most of our employees work Monday through Friday. So we will always recognize holidays during the Monday through Friday stretch. If it happens, if a holiday falls on a Saturday, we recognize it on Friday. If it happens on Sunday, we observe it on Monday. However, we also have some departments that are, that work seven days a week, the police department and fire department in particular. And so we clarified that for those departments that do have seven-day operation, or at least the divisions within those departments that have seven-day operations, the holiday is observed on the actual holiday. So that, you know, if you have a patrol officer working on Saturday, but, well, we moved the holiday for our convenience, we moved the holiday to Friday and now the person who's actually working, police patrol on the holiday is not getting holiday pay. That didn't seem fair either. So we, we just clarified and we handle them slightly different, which again is, that's, that's very standard in, in most municipal operations. And we also changed the holiday pay structure and this is, this is a little bit of a, of a substantial change. I think the police and fire department have already discussed it with their personnel and had very favorable feedback for it because the reality is right now we're giving holiday time off as a leave that gets accrued and then sometimes they get to take it, sometimes it expires, sometimes it just goes away. And it's always a burden on the workforce when they do take it off. Now we've got a backfill and we have overtime. It seems like a much more efficient operation to do away with that leave and simply pay a premium pay, time and a half for hours that are worked on the holiday. So employees that have to work on a holiday would get paid time and a half for any hours they actually work on that holiday. And all full-time employees would get eight hours of holiday pay for, for the holiday. So those of us who work in the office Monday through Friday and we get a holiday off, we get eight hours of holiday pay as if we worked that day, just like we are now, but we would extend the same to those departments that do have to work during the holidays. Obviously we need firefighters here, we need police officers on patrol, we need folks answering 911. So those personnel would get their eight hours of holiday pay, but then they also would get time and a half for any hours that they actually worked on the holiday. And again, that's, that's pretty standard. Most, most municipal operations are, are doing that nowadays. And then again, part-time and temporary employees don't receive paid holidays, but they do get time and a half for if they worked on a holiday. So again, it's, it's a slight change to, to our operation, but I think it's going to be very beneficial to the employees. And then a couple other operational items. The travel, like I said earlier, the travel and subsistence section is removed entirely from the employee handbook, being maintained or proposed as a separate standalone administrative policy. Pay at the time of separation is also changed simply because we no longer have the holiday leave that we need to maintain for police and firefighters. So now all employees are, their payout rules are the same. And we just removed the language that treated police and firefighters differently. And we also, and by doing so, we've improved the consistency, allowing the handbook to be administratively the same across all departments and all levels so that, again, we're not trying to keep track of different divisions, different rules to follow and all of those kind of things. So the idea here is for us to make this, again, the request would be to make it effective January 1st. We would spend the rest of this month making sure that we get the word out, we get the, a new copy of the handbook to the employees, we get the acknowledgement form signed, the department directors would have, you know, staff meetings with their various departments to kind of talk through these, these things, make sure that everyone is aware of it. Again, it's not tremendously impactful on day-to-day operations, but we do want to make sure that the employees are aware of the changes that, that are coming. And so we would take that after tonight. If it gets approved, we will make sure that it's formatted properly, it's all, the pages are numbered properly, get it to final distribution format, make sure that we get it electronically out to all employees that have that or paper copy, get the employee acknowledgement forms and the department heads, like I said, would, will have those staff meetings throughout the day. So what we're requesting with regard to the employee handbook is for you all to consider approval of that tonight and then authorizing, I believe the, the way the resolution is written, much like has been done in the past, is to adopt this, to replace all preceding employee handbooks and then giving authority to the city manager to administer it, to, to manage it and if there are future amendments, to communicate those back to the council so you're aware if there are any administrative changes. It doesn't get done without full knowledge and disclosure. And then, and then we'll take, take it going forward from there. And then as I mentioned, the, the other item on the agenda is the, the travel policy. We want to make sure that we're reimbursing employees or any travelers for, that are traveling on behalf of the city, their reasonable and necessary work, work-related travel expenses. It does emphasize in the standalone policy, the lowest reasonable cost, avoiding impropriety or appearance of impropriety, making sure that we are good fiduciaries of the taxpayers' money, aligning with city expenditure rules and audit-ready documentation. We only reimburse for those expenses that aren't covered by other sources and when in doubt, the employees are instructed or the travelers are instructed to follow the most conservative course of action. So the, the policy kind of sets up that travel has to be pre-approved either by the, a department director or the city manager. If it's a higher level, there's a process for having that. We don't just go off and leave our workplace. We make sure that our supervisors have approved it, just like it is now. Expense reports are due within seven calendar days after we return from travel if we want to get reimbursement for those and the signatory requirements, if it's greater than $1,000 in expenses, it gets signed by the city manager or assistant city manager. If it's less, it can be signed by the department director unless it is the department director and then it gets signed by the city manager or assistant city manager. And so the, whoever is responsible for signing them has the authority to, to review them fully, make sure they're appropriate and to withhold reimbursement for that while that review is done. God bless you, whoever that was. And then exceptions do require written request and approval prior to, to being reimbursed. We do author, authorize or, yeah, we do allow prepayments of certain expenses so that the employees aren't necessarily out of pocket, airfare, rail, rental vehicles, conference fees per diem can be advanced to employees. And the reason that's important is, is, and again, the directors and I have had these conversations, we, we don't know the financial situation of all of our employees and we don't want to be an undue burden when they are traveling for work, for a class or a conference that is for the benefit of the city and the residents. We don't want to be a burden on their household by making them front money where we can, you know? And so we do authorize some things to be, to be handled separately and even per diem to be done through a travel advance. They are expected to secure the lowest available airfare or whatever the accommodations are. Travel advances, if necessary, are required to be submitted 14 to 28 days, so two to four weeks before travel. And then that expense report is due within seven days after they return to reconcile the travel advance. Travel advances aren't required. If some employees choose, generally when I travel, I, I front the money, I put it on my own card and then I fill out the documentation after the fact and get reimbursed afterwards. But again, I'm not going to make the assumption that every employee would like to do that. And so we've got to offer both options there. We do have mileage if, if they're traveling outside of the boundaries there, 35-plus miles from City Hall in a straight line radius. And again, that's kind of the same radius that generally allows us to offer overnight accommodations. There are certain exceptions. If someone's going to a location that let's just say is about 25 or 30 miles away from in that straight line radius, but they have to be there real early the next morning, well, I certainly might authorize, yes, go ahead and go. I don't want you having to get up at four o'clock in the morning to get to an early meeting, go and stay in a hotel tonight and then the next day you're fresh, you're not, you know, tired from having to get up early and, and drive. So there are exceptions or if they're going to be there very late into the evening for a late meeting or something along those lines. So there are some exceptions that allow consideration and we do expect to try to get the lowest rate, just like with airfare, government or conference rates on hotels or those kind of things.
Who makes the arrangements on, on the travel arrangements?
For the most part, the, the employees make the arrangements themselves. There are certain times that, you know, that like for us, when we go to TML, oftentimes the city secretary's office handles a lot of those things. So it just really depends on their department. Some departments have an admin person that, that kind of does that and is attuned to getting those rates and so they do it for all of the employees and then sometimes the, the employees, it just depends on the makeup of the department. Some departments have that administrative support and some don't.
Do we, do we have enough of those that it would be reasonable or feasible to have one office make all the arrangements?
I don't believe so. You know, it would be an extra person that we would have to hire and I just don't, I don't know that we have that much travel that we would justify another employee position.
Yeah, I don't think we should add, add another person just to do that, but it's just to centralize it.
So the per diem and meals that we do offer, it's, this is a slight change in, in the proposal to, to the way we've been doing it, still using the GSA benchmark, but what, what this proposal would be is that we use the GSA standard rate. Instead of looking up the individual city and say, well, I'm going to Fort Worth, or TML was, we're, we're going to Fort Worth, we have to look up in the GSA schedule, find that specific dollar amount. The challenge with that, there's a couple reasons. The standard rate is the lower of the two in all cases. And so that allows us to set up our forms so that they have a set dollar amount for per diem that we know we are going to give to all of our travelers. It standardizes it, gives consistency across the board and it also allows us to set the forms up so that that dollar amount doesn't have to be, we can lock that, that cell in the spreadsheet so that we don't have the chance of putting the wrong dollar amount in there, someone looked up the wrong city or they didn't realize the city was listed and they used the county as opposed to the city. The GSA website can get, sometimes can get a little confusing when you have a lot of different options. It also then becomes an administrative burden on the supervisor, the manager and the city manager's office who have to at each level go back, look it up, verify, yes, they went to the right spot, they picked the right city, they used the right dollar amount and the form is all been kept, the integrity of the form and the formulas are all intact. Whereas if we lock that down and we have a form that just says, you know, right now the standard rate I think is $68, which is $60 for meal and $8 for incidental expenditures. That's very easy for us to say, okay, we, we've plugged that in, we can do all our formulas based on that. And when they come across, you know, a manager's desk or my desk, it's always the same and I can quickly say, okay, yes, that's all correct, rather than having to take additional time to go to a website, look it up, make sure that it's the right, go in, recalculate, make sure that all the formulas were still intact. And so again, it's, it's a little lower dollar amount than we were previously authorizing for some per diem travel. Some of them were using the standard rate, but some cities we were allowing a, a more premium. The more standard operation for most cities is to use the standard rate. The more standard operation for most cities is to use the standard rate, not to do the city-specific rates. That's a federal government thing that they they're really into using all those. Nothing wrong with doing it that way. I just felt like the administrative burden that it was putting on us and having to be able to manage the system wasn't really worth the extra the extra few dollars for for the travelers. And and I think it's still reasonable. I don't think anyone's going to go hungry getting $60 as opposed to $72 or something along those lines per day for per diem. So and then it still does keep the the same true with, God bless you, meals that are provided by the conference or by a vendor or the hotel or some other source are supposed to be subtracted out. We don't get both a per diem allowance and get our meal taken care of by some other source.
One thing I noticed, and I don't know if I'm reading into it or assuming something, and it may be an employee would, on that section where meals per diem, and then it says per diem allowances are reimbursable for overnight travel. And then it lists the per diem is intended to cover meals as well as incidental expenses, including items such as laundry, dry cleaning, and customary services and tips. Flip the page, non-reimbursable travel expenses, laundry and dry cleaning is listed.
Okay.
I mean, do you see what I'm talking about? Because in one section it says it's a reimbursable and then the other says.
Well, it's it's reimbursable as a part of your incidental expenses.
Right, you can use that.
If you choose to use it as a part of your incidentals, then but yeah, we we could certainly clarify if if we need to, we can we can go in and clean that up a little bit.
Because I know if you were traveling, you were going to be gone for a week or maybe longer or something and then have to have some clothes cleaned or something, I don't know. That was just something. But I can see where understandably that would be general expenses.
Yeah, that's all this this slide actually covers that, what you just brought out. So it does say what are non-reimbursable. I don't see that. I probably just didn't include it on here, but we'll make sure that that's clarified in there.
What page is that on? What's that page number in there?
Page six of nine and then page eight. If we have any further questions or discussion, while you all are thinking of questions, I will offer Mr. Cox and I had a little bit of a communication confusion. He thought he was on the 6 o'clock agenda tonight. So he's on his way here. He thinks he'll be here by 5:30. So if we wrap it up, maybe we'll take a brief recess while he gets set up. But just wanted you all to know, that's why he's not here yet. He's on his way.
On page four.
Of the employee handbook or travel policy?
Employee handbook. It says city council serves to return. I think they changed it.
Ah, okay.
I noticed there was comments about direct deposit, I'm sorry, about a check and getting a check and how we're going to pay you, but I don't see anything that talks about direct deposit or if there's any difference in what that may look like if it's a direct deposit versus a check. I wrote that down on page 29.
Okay.
And then I had a question about maternity leave and or paternity leave. So like we had that in there when we when we looked over this the last time, but I didn't, maybe I just read over it really quick, but I don't.
I well, I can tell you, in in all three items that you brought up, I didn't make any change. There's no proposed changes. So what we should be seeing is wording that's already in the handbook, not to say they shouldn't be updated and corrected like the terms of the of the officials. So if maternity leave and paternity leave is in there, it should still be in there. I didn't remove anything.
It's a separate policy.
Oh, it's a separate policy.
It's a separate policy.
They're referred to, but I don't think it mentions paternity or maternity, but it talks about it.
Paid rental leave.
Yes, that's what it is.
Because I know that we added some some wording the last time and I'm like, I don't see that anywhere.
It's a separate policy.
Okay, is we could add that to the handbook.
Well, I have a little bit of concern with removing policies out of the handbook because then we have three or four different policies that we didn't have. I don't I don't know that there's any real confusion with going back and changing the entire thing. I mean, especially if we're going to do it electronic now, why would it matter if it's a standalone policy or not? Just in general, as you think about travel and.
Yeah, it's I think it's just the course of the the employee handbook, the the general feedback that you get from human resources professionals is the employee handbook should be limited to things that deal with the employees' employment. And the travel policy is really only some employees will ever use it, and it it just applies to certain circumstances where an employee is traveling on behalf of, it's really not employment-related this. And so there are and and really the the recommendation that we've been that we've received from that there was a review apparently done even before I was hired, and there's a there's a recommendation that quite a few other things get removed from what is currently in our employee handbook so that it would be more of a standardized best practices employee handbook from a human resources perspective. But again, we're not proposing any of those changes tonight. This was we we meant for it to be a small because we wanted to get the the travel policy in place, wanted to get the vacation, I'm sorry, the holiday pay in place so that we could have a January 1 kickoff and and start afresh with those. And then we've we've talked about taking, like I said, a deeper dive into the handbook next year and and doing a more thorough review for things like you're bringing up, the the things that might need to be addressed in there that have been in there for maybe many years.
I'm just suggesting that as as I just had that question, why wouldn't it be in the employee handbook? Why is it in a separate policy than what we're looking at? So.
I don't I don't disagree. So that that one, and actually the paid rental leave does seem to be employment-related and and might very well go in there. I can't answer why it wasn't put in there. I wasn't here then.
It was noted as exhibits. They were added at the end of the handbook.
Not in the handbook, I was given when I was hired.
Yeah, they, after the handbook was approved, my understanding is they went back because they had recently passed four different policies, the certification policy, tuition reimbursement, catastrophic leave and paternal, sorry, leave policy. And so they added them as exhibits to the back of the handbook. I don't know that they were necessarily in the handbook when it was approved, but just to have those available for employees at the time.
I don't know what you got. There was a version that had them as exhibits. It keeps you from probably keep changing the index and everything if they're exhibits, but they were part of the book.
On page four, in the description of the various departments, I wonder if we shouldn't have had on the parks and recreation that talking about the care and maintenance of parks and facilities owned by the city, including the municipal swimming pool. What is a policy on on-call or standby time as far as pay is concerned? Are any stipend or anything for standby, being on standby?
On-call or standby?
Isn't it like 200 or something, 1550? It says on page 24 in the index, but I don't know.
Well, it's on 23. They talk about on-call or standby time, but I didn't see anything about talking about a pay scale on it.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect the dollar amount to be in there because again, it it changes probably from time to time and you don't want to amend the whole handbook. So you just like an hourly rate for employees' pay.
On page 27, it talks about. But it didn't have the.
It doesn't even say anything about him being about there being any pay for it.
Yeah, that's that's the existing handbook. We're not proposing any changes to that.
Just to clarify what you two are talking about, he's in the handbook, you're in the draft. So if you're going to compare number, page numbers, they're different.
Okay. I'm I'm reading what's in the book here, though.
There's two copies in our book. One is the draft and one is the one that's already written.
Okay.
Or approved.
See, looking at the draft for the the original. Is he looking at the original?
He's in the clean version of the proposed.
I think what he's saying, there's just it doesn't mention anything about pay on standby.
Right, yeah. That's not changing from what is in the current handbook.
We appear to have moved to fax us out of it out as a means of communication, but on the press conferences on page 62, talking about making advisory invitation should be faxed to the media. I was wondering if.
Yeah, and I think that's that's probably something that that should get updated in the when we do a thorough review and a update to the to the employee handbook. Because it it may need to say emailed, it may need to say faxed, it may some may still use fax machines, some may, you know.
If not, you can always just communicate to Robert if there's something that you catch later after reading it.
And I've definitely made note of the ones that you guys have already brought up that from the thoughts tonight to make sure that we get those incorporated into the into
I'm waiting on Mr. Cox writing five. We're just going to recess for the moment and guess when he gets back, we'll resume. I'll let you introduce, Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir, Mayor Counsel. We did have several planning sessions that went into the development and updates to our strategic plan. There've been meetings with staff, meetings with council, and meetings with staff and council combined. And our our consultant, Ron Cox, is here tonight to present those results to you and offer a a final strategic plan for adoption.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Mayor. I am so sorry for the miscommunication. I was going to be early and it didn't quite work out that way. So thanks for waiting on me. I appreciate it very much. We we have worked together very well since since the first of September, September 12th and 13th, well, actually, December. I'll get I'll get my dates straight in a minute. Here in December, but since September, we've been working together. And I appreciate all of the the work that you all do as elected officials, council members on behalf of of this community. And I appreciate the fact that you all want to come together and look at how can we anticipate the needs and and direct our strategies toward facing those needs and becoming very very proactive in that regard. I appreciate also the staff coming back and working with us when when we came back in in November to to visit with them and develop an action plan based on the strategies that you all prepared. So they've done a great job doing that. Process-wise, we're ending ending this process. We did our sessions in October and and the staff implementation workshop in November, and here we are, 1st of December, through this process. Our agenda for that day or for really two different sessions together, the first session was on governance, and that sort of focused on you all as as a group together and how you best function and can best function together. And then we came back in in October, later in October, and worked with the council and the staff together as as a body to to do that strategic planning through the process. So I want to go through just a little, very quickly, the governance model that you all established. And you all did establish your original governance model in 2019. And so this was a both a review and an update to that since you had a new council member, one council member rolled off and came back, but but you had a new council member in the process, probably been a while since you'd talked about it. I'm sorry, not 2019, 2021, as we worked through this process. We started off talking about what our individual attributes are and and why you all ran for the positions that you did. And in that regard, it's it's the process of you come independently, you you have your circles of influence, you come independently, but then when you get behind the dais, you're you're one vote out of the five and and you have to end and you have to run, you have to work together through these processes. So we talked about why you ran and and in 25 here, those those things in red are what you added here in 25. The great thing about it is that all of you came here to serve. You came to serve and to and to assist in the in the betterment of the community as you work through these as you go through these processes. of the community as you work through these, as you go through these processes. You bring various backgrounds, you bring your own expertise, your own, as I said, circle of influence, and you bring those things to the table, and then you're asked to work together. So the question is, how do you work together through this process of governance? And the best organizations, the organizations that work best together make those processes more predictable and consistent. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna worry you with this cartoon again. But we talked about leadership, we talked about communication, talked about understanding our roles and responsibilities, and then fulfilling expectations. And then we focused on what is the vision that you have for Navasota, and then ultimately develop the strategic plan. So this whole process began in that, in this first session. We talked, all of these are ingredients of good vision, visioning and planning, vision, mission, values, comprehensive plan, annual strategic plan. And you all have all of those things, all put together. And, and, and the, the importance is to review and refresh those things, make sure that, that they are consistent with what the real, the community really needs and wants, and then move on into the planning process. So your vision and, and, and mission were things that we talked about. We talked about the key elements of the, of the vision that you have for this community. To be a role model, to be clean, safe, friendly, to acknowledge that it is a historic community, a beautiful, manicured, successful, sustainable, full of opportunity, innovative and charming. And each of us can find ways that that fits the community, but it also, we also can find ways that we need to improve those things. So those are vision elements. Those are what we want Navasota to look like when we grow up. And, and in twenty, and then most recently, you wanted it to be financially stable, that products and services for citizens are in this city and you don't have to go out of town, that everyone citywide is included, that the, the citizenry is engaged, it's a great place to live, work and play, thriving downtown and people are happy and content. So those are, those are things that you want this community to look like. They may not all, we haven't attained all of those things, but we certainly want to look like these things and be known for these kinds of things as we move through. So looking at the vision elements, then we looked at the vision statement that you all looked at and, and developed in twenty-seven. Navasota, what Americans want to be, a beautiful, progressive, vibrant, service-oriented, close-knit community filled with historic charm and promise for people and business. That's the, that, all of those key elements then were rolled into one statement. And, and so as we looked at these, we wanted to make sure that the vision statement that you all created in twenty-seven was still accurate, and it was consistent with the elements that you all were talking about as key elements for the vision. And you concluded that, that in fact, that those, that there is consistency in that regard. And as you work through these elements of the vision elements and the mission elements, and as you develop those strategies, then there needs to be a consistency between those strategies and, and the vision statement. It sets the base. The vision element, the vision statement sets the base for everything else that you do as, as you work through this process. And where the vision is what you want to look like, the mission is how you're going to get there, the methods that you're going to get there. You're going to be committed, you're going to be focused, you're going to be dedicated, you're going to do the proper planning, you're going to communicate that vision to others, provide exceptional customer service in the process, be clear and consistent, and understand and define our responsibilities, flexible understanding. We're going to promote Navasota to others, plan for the rehabilitation of the downtown buildings, and, and ensure that the downtown remains a vibrant community. Anecdotally, I've been, I was in another city not long ago, and they talked about what Navasota used to look like many, many years ago, and, and had been through recently, and, and were very, uh, uh, not appreciative, but, but they acknowledged the work that you all had done in that regard. And it was, it was great to hear that, particularly after having been here and having heard what I heard from, from you all in this process. So the mission statement then is to guide Navasota's growth in a way that maintains our heritage, culture, culture and uniqueness while maximizing our economic and social development. That's how we're going to do it. Key values that you all have developed in the past were acknowledged and solidified, teamwork, honor and integrity, resilience and adaptability, inclusivity and diversity, vision and progress, empowerment and engagement, leadership values that thrive. And that, that is an action word, thriving is an action word that leads this community. So again, we talked about effective leadership, meaningful communication, understanding roles and expectations, and then visioning. And, and in your report, you'll see the details to those, to those leadership values, the, how you will lead, how you will communicate. We talked about expectations, but I did want to take your time with that since it's in your report. But our planning session, shifting to the planning session, we, we went through a SWOT analysis to analyze the strengths of the community and the organization, the weaknesses of the community and the organization, and then identify opportunities. What, what is that we can do to overcome those weaknesses? How can we use our strengths to overcome our weaknesses? And then we talk about threats. So there are five strategic focus areas that you all developed. As you talked about these weaknesses, those were, had already been somewhat developed, and then we confirmed those through this process. But as we talked about those weaknesses, we identified those within what I call focus areas, and then those became larger strategic focus areas. Marketing and communications, infrastructure, facilities and buildings, community and economic development, organizational excellence are the five key focus areas. Some organization call those pillars, that we're gonna, we're gonna breast our, our processes and our projects on these pillars. But I like to see them as focus areas, and we're going to strategically look within those and identify strategies that will help us to address the weaknesses that we found in those five areas. In the process of that, of developing that SWOT, out of that, out of those opportunities, then came what we, what we call objectives. With the goal being improving our marketing and communication, how are we going to do that? Those objectives then became the action items in the strategic plan. And you can see there are seven or eight of those here. And to, to update and revise the website content, as, as an example, to update the new resident packet of information. Those objectives work toward overcoming the weaknesses that were identified in the marketing and communications areas. In infrastructure, complete and implement the instruction, the infrastructure capital improvements plan, continue to pursue grants of, and alternative funding, establish, encourage water conservation programs are examples of the kinds of things that you all talked about and identified as ways to further strengthen the infrastructure of the community. Strategic focus area number three was facilities and buildings. Establish a facilities replacement and maintenance master plan, plan and provide technology, including safety cameras at Wi, and Wi-Fi at parks, improve fleet management services, expand grant opportunities here as well, and identify and improve parking in key public use areas. Those four facilities and plans, you all have done a tremendous amount of work, and there are, there were some very important objectives in the earlier strategic plan that you're continuing to work on as well. Number four was community and economic development, improve the railroad crossing safety and convenience, enhance and beautify the city's entryways and gateways. Those kinds of things make the community more presentable, establish more robust and safe, establish a more robust code enforcement program, continue economic and workforce development with your partners, update the onboarding for new residents, and, and, and include in that ways for new residents to become more, more closely tied with the community, become residents and community members as, as, as they come and live and work here in, in Navasota. Number five, organizational excellence, employ, establish a, a employee engagement recognition program, improve training, development skills, and develop succession planning. Recruitment and retention is always an important thing. Sometimes, especially in police departments, we become, smaller cities become the training ground for the larger cities. And so you don't want to be training others, training your best employees to just leave. And so how do you recruit, but not, but more specifically, how do you retain? And then overall team building wellness to strengthen relationships that we have, all with the objective of, or with the goal of improving the excellence in the organization itself. Once we've completed that part of the process, we talked about threats, what would keep you from accomplishing the goals? Used to legislative mandates were kind of down low, somebody thought, would think about them as, but now, that's almost the first thing I hear in most every city that I, that I work with, and that legislature has steadily identified ways to reduce the flexibility of cities, in my opinion. And those mandates are often things that you could do at one time that you can't do now. And so we have to, we have to learn how to deal with those, we have to work our way through those mandates that come, come by from time to time. And along with that, lack of funding. Oftentimes, these are big goals, big objectives, big ideas that would take a lot of money. And if we just said, oh, well, it's going to take a lot of money, I guess we can't do that, then that's a threat. What we do is we, we bite that apple a little bite at a time in order to be able to accomplish ultimately what you want to do. Sometimes there's lack of buy-in. If you don't have good communication and marketing of, of what needs to be done, then you don't get the buy-in that you need from the community. So those things need to be addressed, anticipated, and ultimately addressed. And you can see the kinds of things on that list that you all talked about. So we, we came back, you, you see the, the, the strategic plan, but we came back and prepared an implementation plan. And do we, do you have that example that you can put that up right quick? I, I, I'm not going to go through it in detail. I haven't gone through this, this report in detail. But I wanted, I wanted to show, excuse me, I wanted to show you what the staff has done, how the staff has taken those overall broad objectives and put meat, meat on the table, if you will. So in the left-hand column, you'll see the strategic focus area, in this case, marketing and communication. You'll see a goal statement, the overall, the broad goal, and then you'll see the objectives that we've talked about in that third column already. From the fourth column on to the right, and I know this is small for the audience to see, but from the fourth column on, you see detailed action steps that the staff believes that they can take to help the council accomplish those particular objectives. And not only that, but they've identified some budget responsibilities, they've identified a timeline when they would be working on that and bringing those things back to you. They've identified a lead person on the staff who will take responsibility. It's not that that person has to, to accomplish that task, those action steps, but that that person is responsible for that. And then finally, that, that, that there are others out there in the community that, and around in, in the region who are partners and can be partners in the accomplishment of these objectives. And so the staff worked really hard on this. On the one day that I came, I know they worked hard, but they worked hard in subsequent days to kind of package this in such a way that it made sense to you. You'll see in the final column on the right, a column called reporting. And so the staff will, through Robert, will, will report on the status of these goals and objectives and action items, and, and on a regular basis. And in the, in the report, I think, is indicated there will be some, some reporting on a quarterly basis and maybe an annual, I may be, I may be a little more aggressive, may have decided to do something a little different.
Yeah, so what we discussed is we will incorporate this into our annual budget workshop, just, just like we did this year, we had, we touched on it, but we will make sure that we do an update as a part of our annual budget workshop. And then about six months later, about this time of year, November, December timeframe, we will plan a formal presentation by the responsible directors where they'll come up and give an update each year so that we get an update to the council. Formally, at this time of year, and then also about six months later in the budget process, we'll do, we'll do an update as we're working through the budget each year.
And, and so that, that, that's the process that we started with back in September when we did our interviews. We had our sessions in October, and we had our staff session in November, and here we are, first of December. And, and it should be something that you all can wrap your arms around, something that, that, that the count, that the staff will probably come back in, either in the budget work sessions, or sometimes you'll see those in agenda items. Say, Mayor and Counsel, this is an agenda item related to one of the objectives in the strategic plan, so that you kind of keep that alive and keep that in front of you as you work through this process. I appreciate, having been asked to come back for the second time, from twenty-one now to twenty-five, I appreciate working with Robert and all of the staff and each of you to, to be able to pull this together. It's, it's, it's making sausage, but I hope the sausage tastes good when you get through. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I think we'll probably also have that planned in our, each of our agendas so that we kind of see it all the time and always have a, kind of an eye at, to keep up with this. Well, thank you, Ron. Thank you so much. And you didn't really say anything out here as far as your, what gives you a lot of experience and what, what you're, what you helped us with. You might want to just tell everybody what your, kind of your background is because you bring a lot to the table.
Well, I'm just a worn-out city manager. It's about, about all it amounts to. I was a city manager in four different cities here in Texas over a twenty-eight-year period. And my, my first job out of college was with the Brazos Valley Cog in, in Ryan College Station. So this is always like coming home when I come back this direction. But four cities, in two thousand and sixteen, I did consulting work, and, and thought I would give that a try a while. That was almost twenty years ago. So I think, I think we've been okay in that regard. And in January, I will be working with my ninety-fifth city, all across, that'll be in the city of Brownsville. So all across the state of Texas, I've had the opportunity to work with councils like, like you all, and let them, give them an opportunity, give you all the opportunity to talk about what your needs are and how you can accomplish those needs. I don't bring the solutions. You all always have a solution to the problem. It's just being able to allow you the opportunity and the time to, to talk together and, and work as a team with each other as well as your staff. So I appreciate your letting me come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Hey, we will adjourn the special meeting.